Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson.
Here.
Harding. Jaram.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance to remain standing for our invocation today by Councilmember Brinker Harding?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a couple of quick things. One, remember the snow event's over, so make sure you clear your sidewalk so you don't get assessed. It's a bigger fine this year. Two, to all those who are celebrating, happy third night of Hanukkah. And lastly, I want to acknowledge the life and service and dedication of George Herbert Walker Bush, 41, on his passing. Thanks.
Thank you.
But the city is staying open tomorrow.
I know.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this city council meeting today. The council thanks you for joining us today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Item six, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for the Shire located northeast of Seventy-Second Street and Silver Valley Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number six is today. Proponents, please.
Doug Kellner with Thompson Dreesen, the owner, here on behalf of the applicant. Available to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Just a quick question, either for you or maybe for Mr. Fanslaw. So this is a property right along Seventy-Second Street nearing Country Club Road that has been vacant for quite some time, and there's been some previous development proposals there that didn't go well with the surrounding neighbors and were not approved. But I think this one's different. I think it does have the support of the surrounding neighborhoods in terms of the communications I've received. One concern is that, or interest, I should say, is Silver Valley Road itself. So when you come into this development, it's an unimproved road right there and substandard all the way around what becomes Starlight Drive and kind of wraps around. So it's your understanding that as part of this development, it's the developer's responsibility to bring that portion of road in front of the development up to concrete and curb and regular city standards, right?
Correct. And the curb that you're talking about gets teed into this road to make a little better intersection. I guess, I don't know if you've got the picture, but there will be... But they will add curb to it, and there is a certain section at the beginning that's already prepared, so they'll add curb in this general area and then tee the intersection here, so it's a little safer intersection at that point. And then the rest will be concrete.
And the concrete goes all the way up to the edge of the property there on Glendale Avenue, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then maybe for Mr. Stube, I suppose, if neighbors also have the interest of improving the rest of that curb property, they could undertake the SID process, and it might be wise to do that around the same time if they had that interest, right?
Bob Stube, Public Works. Yes, in this particular case, because those roads are unimproved, there's two options. One would be a roadway maintenance district, the other would be a street improvement district. In this particular case, because of the new street that's going in, obviously, Public Works always has a desire to try to encourage the street improvement districts because that is a more permanent, long-term improvement in the area.
Okay. And what's your timing? When do you think construction will take place and be completed?
They're wanting to begin next spring, so it would be, you know, late fall probably before houses are starting to be built in that area.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I'll go ahead and move approval.
Moved and seconded to approve item six. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero. Item seven, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for the Courtyard on Park located at 1007 Park Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number seven is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Members of the council, David Levy, Barrett Home Law Firm, 1700 Farnham Street. You heard about this project two weeks ago with regard to its TIF application, so I won't belabor it further with another presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item seven. There are no lights. Roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Mr. President. Item seven is approved, seven to zero. Items eight to twelve relate to the same project and can be considered together for Plaza 133 located at 101st Street and Blair High Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item eight, in ordinance to rezone this property from GI District, GC District, MH District, and DR District to DR District. Item nine, in ordinance to rezone this property from GI District, GC District, MH District, and DR District to GI District. Item ten, in ordinance to mend the boundaries of the IG Overlay District to incorporate this property into that district. Item eleven, a resolution to approve the final plat for Plaza 133. And item twelve, a resolution to approve the Plaza 133 subdivision agreement.
Public hearing on items eight through eleven is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Don Heine with Thompson Dreesen, the owner, here on behalf of the applicant. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Ms. Melton.
Yes, Mr. Heine. If you could just give us a few more details about what you're doing for Plaza 133 on Blair High.
This is a replating of a previously partially platted area, industrial area. It'll be extending the road that currently dead ends in a temporary cul-de-sac, extending it on up to Highway 133 at the Potter Street intersection. This will be a total of nine new industrial lots for the area.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Moved and seconded to approve items eight through twelve. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items eight to twelve are approved, seven to zero. Item thirteen, a resolution to approve the special use permit application for New York Auto Sales to allow automobile sales in a GC District located northwest of Seventy-First and Blondo Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And B is communication opposition.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirteen is today. Proponents, please. Proponent? If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Ibrahim Nuwara. Address 4743 South Eighty-Third Street, apartment number seventy-four. I'm part-owner of the New York Auto.
Okay. And you're here to just answer any questions?
Any questions, any objections, any yes.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. This is about Seventy-Second and Blondo, I think, a current property that you're seeking especially use permit on to do auto sales.
Yes, sir.
About how many autos would you anticipate having there at one time?
About fifteen to twenty at the most.
Okay. And so it's all used sales?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then Mr. Fanslaw, I see the recommendation here includes the ACI designation, and so therefore some new landscaping requirements and some screening to the street and probably the surrounding businesses. Can you describe that a little bit?
Yes, we're required to put six foot-high fence on the north and the east side, and that's done. The landscaping is done. We're just waiting on to do the south-side fence, hopefully within the next week or two.
Okay. And then Mr. Fanslaw, the access points don't change. I think there's just one driveway there, and there's only fifteen or twenty cars, as he's noted, but it is really close to the intersection of Seventy-Second and Blondo, so just wanted to confirm that we're okay with the access points and how we think traffic will flow there.
Yeah, Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. Yes, we're comfortable with where the access was. The site's kind of limited to where that access can be, so when the use permit was reviewed and by staff, that existing driveway was allowed to stay where it's at.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I'll move approval.
Moved and seconded to approve item thirteen. Ms. Melton.
Thank you. I was just wondering, because you stated that that fence is done and the landscaping is done. Did you have any pictures? We did receive a protest, and I guess one of the things I always look at, and I know Mr. Pauls, Councilman Pauls has had some of these, you know, used car lots can, when we're trying to develop an area and we're trying to clean up an area, sometimes lots like this can really bring it down because it doesn't necessarily look as good. But you said that the landscaping is done and the fence is up. Did you bring any pictures to show us what it looks like right now?
No, because we did not finish the, we still have one more site of the fence to do. Facing the south, facing Blondo, we still need to put wrought iron fence six feet high, and we're hopefully doing that within the next week or two. After that, we can take... Go ahead.
Oh, that's okay. What kind of landscaping was done? I mean, to kind of beautify the area?
We tore the, there was only concrete side. There was no grass area facing the Blondo. We tore the concrete out. We added the grass to the curb side. And against the building, we added another garden-like, and where there used to be enough space for parking, and I think that's what the planning board was concerned about, we put large pots of flowers that are going to be there permanently.
Okay. And I know today would not be a good day to see what that probably looks like, so I knew what that was.
It's all, you know, just soil, and I mean, obviously, nothing growing right now.
Right. Okay. And will you try and continue to make that? Because we, I mean, I know that, I'm sure Councilman Festerson, too, would like to see this area develop and look good, and we don't want to be adding things that would maybe deter further development in that area.
Yes. I mean, we really, we talked to the neighbors, and we told them that we're there to live within, and we know whatever it takes to get along with everybody there, we will do it. And we did that with the planning board, too. So, you know, whatever they require us to do, we will do it. We did not cut corners or try to get around it.
Okay. Thank you. I'm glad you're willing to be a good neighbor.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks. Yeah, I agree with those comments as well, and it is accurate, though. The current site is essentially surrounded by three retaining walls right now, and it's really kind of tucked back in into surrounding businesses, right?
Yes, sir.
So what you're required to do is remove that chain link fence and put a wood fence in, which will be much nicer on top.
We did that.
But for the most part, you can't really see the lot unless you're inside there.
No. And in the past, to be honest with you, there were junk cars, boats, mobile homes stored there. And, I mean, it is going to be a big improvement.
So where you can make a big difference, I think, is the front door right along Seventy-Second Street like you're describing, and that'd be great? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve item thirteen. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirteen is approved, seven to zero. Item fourteen, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Holiday Inn Express Omaha located at 2431 Farnham Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number fourteen is today. Proponents, please.
Andrea Homestead, I'm the liquor manager, 8015 North Twenty-Eighth Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm here to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item fourteen. No lights. Roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item fourteen is approved, seven to zero. Item fifteen, an application to consider a Class C K liquor license for Element Omaha Midtown Crossing located at 3253 Dodge Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifteen is today. Proponents, please.
I'm DJ Miller, the GM, 3253 Dodge Street. Here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item fifteen. No lights. Roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item fifteen is approved, seven to zero. Item sixteen, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Omaha Ramada Plaza located at 3321 South Seventy-Second Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixteen is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name's Charisse. My address, 7101 South Eighty-Third Apartment One with MPLS Hotel Management. Here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. What's her last, I'm sorry, last name?
Stevens. My last name is Stevens.
Stevens, okay. Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item sixteen is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item seventeen, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Pub 134 located at 3015 North Ninetieth Street, number five.
Public hearing on agenda item number seventeen is today. Proponents, please.
Hello, my name is Nick Jors, owner. My address is 4917 North Ninety-Sixth Street. If you have any questions, let me answer them.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seventeen is approved, seven to zero. Item eighteen, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for EPOCA Cantina located at 1101 Davenport Street, Suite 150.
Public hearing on agenda item number eighteen is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name's Juan Magana, 6322 South 100th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68127, from EPOCA Cantina, and I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eighteen is approved, seven to zero. Item nineteen, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for the Arboretum located at 8141 Farnham Drive.
Public hearing on agenda item number nineteen is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon again, Mr. President. Members of the council, David Levy, Barrett Home Law Firm, 1700 Farnham Street, here on behalf of the applicant. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item nineteen. No lights. Roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nineteen is approved, seven to zero. Item twenty, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Foma Corner Store located at 5522 South Thirtieth Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty is today. Proponents, please. Item number twenty, proponents, please. There you go.
Mr. President, council, I'm here with Mr. Tile Ayele, who is the owner of a Foma Corner Store, and we are in support of the application.
Your name, please.
Forgive me, Perry Persch with Persch Legal Services.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item twenty. No lights. Roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty is approved, seven to zero. Items twenty-one and twenty-two can be considered together. Resolutions to approve Big Red Keno Satellite Agreements at the Good Life Sports Bar and Grill located at 1203 South 180th Street and 20231 Vanderson Street.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers twenty-one and twenty-two are today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name's Katrina Coffey. I'm Vice President of Marketing for Big Red Keno. We're located at 11248 John Galt Boulevard. With me today, Chad McMahon. He's the owner of both the locations, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items twenty and twenty-one and twenty-two. Roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items twenty-one and twenty-two are approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers twenty-three through twenty-five were held on November twentieth, 2018. Moved and seconded to approve twenty-three through twenty-five. There are no lights. Roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items twenty-three through twenty-five are approved, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers twenty-six through thirty-three are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items twenty-six through thirty-three. No lights. Roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items twenty-six through thirty-three are approved, seven to zero. Item thirty-four, a resolution to approve the professional services agreement with Olson Associates in the amount of $45,000 for the 2018-2019 residential snowplow inspector's street maintenance project.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-four is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I said in the past, I think we have qualified management here at the city and union employees that could do this job. This is the fourth time we've seen one of these in front of us for a snow inspector. Whether they can get there any sooner than the employees we already have on the clock or not, I think it's money that we should look at in the future, not subbing out to these different organizations, so I will not be in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no more lights. Is there a motion? Moved and seconded to approve item thirty-four. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirty-four is approved, six to one. Item thirty-five, in ordinance levying a special tax on assessment on all lots and pieces of real estate within Street Improvement District, 6879 in the city of Omaha, to cover the cost of constructing and improving Leavenworth Street from Ninety-Third Street to Ninety-Fourth Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-five is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item thirty-six, in ordinance to designate the automobile sales building and Army Corps laboratory located at 420 South Eighteenth Street as a landmark. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-six is today. Proponents, please.
Bob Perrin, 1101 South Thirty-Sixth Street, and I'm the owner of that particular building. It's kind of been in the news lately because the county is thinking of taking it over. That may change. But let me start off with showing you exactly what the building looks like today and where it is. Will this work? Not very well, huh? Now we're there. Okay? This is the building that's right next to the Flatiron, this is Flatiron Hotel. Across the street's the law building, and the auto sales building is right here. It was, plans were done in 1919, ninety-nine years ago. Built in 1920, and I can tell you that all of us have probably walked by that building a hundred times and never noticed it. We couldn't wait to get past it as we walked from City Hall to the Flatiron or to any other place in town. So this building's really been hidden for a long time to most all of us, but it's the most unique building I think we have, and probably has more history in it than any in it than any of the other buildings that I've ever worked on. In fact, as an architect, it's the strongest building I have ever seen in Omaha. It's poured concrete with reinforced steel. It's only had two uses. From 1920 until 1948, it was automobile dealerships, and every one of them used it exactly as the way it was built, except changing the signs on the outside. And then in 1948, the War Department bought it, and it was taken over by the Corps of Engineers as a laboratory for testing materials. And it stayed that way until 2010, when it was sold by an auction to an investor. And then a few years later, I bought it and began to understand what the building was about. And I'm going to tell you, when I bought it, it took me two years to figure out what was going on with it and what value it had. But not only does the building interesting in terms of its outside and its inside, but the history is important. One of the things that we have in City Hall are microfilm copies of plans, old historic plans. Preservation architects use these a lot. I've used them many times. We have 12 or 15 sheets of the original plans for the building on microfilm. So they give us great detail as to what happened to it. But most unique is that we have another 10 sheets of drawings. They were the engineers' drawings. These are the structural engineers' specifications and plans for how the building was put together. I have never seen these drawings. In my 40-some years of practice, I've never seen them. All of my peers, none of my peers that I've talked to have ever seen the engineering drawings for buildings. So this gave us more insight to this building than any other that we've ever had a chance to see. It is reinforced steel with poured concrete all the way around it. All the floors are that way. We have some pictures of it, the outside. This is the first picture we have of the exterior when it was Nebraska Automobile Company in 1921. And then it went to other dealerships. One of them was this, yeah, McCaffrey Chevrolet. And that was 1925. And I can tell you that the McCaffreys are a prominent Omaha family. They didn't know that their family had this dealership. And in fact, a couple of sisters who happen to be grandchildren who played in this building had never found it until they discovered it through the publicity that it's had lately. And on that same light, another realtor came up to me and said, you know, my wife's sister was a McCaffrey. We didn't know we had this history in part of our life. So this, the building is adding history to our, to our local residents at the same time. Then in 1944, this was another example of a dealership. And finally, that was Miller Canuth at the time. And this was Campbell Motors, which sold Hudson Automobile Dealers in 1948. That was the last time it was, was an automobile dealership. One of the other unique things is on the west side of the building, this sign was taken in 1930. Today, you just see like a painted outline. You can't really make it out. And that's really, I have had trouble with it. We've been studying it for four years. And finally, we found enough photographs to prove that there were five different signs on the side of that building, all painted in exactly the same spot. So as the, as the, as weather's worn off, the signs, it's a little hard to tell which one was which. But luckily, we're making progress. Also, we have the collection of historic photographs from the Durham and from Nebraska State Historical Society. You all know, we have lots of pictures of the exteriors of buildings. We have lots of them. We have street scenes. We have car scenes. We have all kinds of things. It's really unusual for us to have any substantial pictures of the inside of buildings from the 1920s. This was a 1924 picture of the interior. And I can tell you, this space looks exactly like it today, as it was when this picture was taken. This is the parts department. There's now a wall there, but that'll come down. This is a picture on the entrance garage on the first floor. It's back when we had customer service, when people met you in little white coats. The servicemen took your keys, took care of your car, and took you to a waiting room. This is on the second floor of the building, and the inside is spectacular from an archaeological standpoint because everything is still there. In this particular picture, there's a chain that operates, a tambor door, a metal door. That's still there. The chain's there, the padlocks on the chain. The paint colors are the same. This outlet back here, this conduit is exactly what it was, when it was built in 1930. This was a picture taken December 4th of 1930. It's on the northwest corner of the second floor. And if you look, you can see a bent vent. This is in a chimney. This is where a blacksmith shop was originally built. That chimney cover is bent exactly the way it is then in 1930, today. So that's what, 80-some years, 60, 70, 75, 80 years of exactly intact interiors. We have lots of pictures of the inside of automobiles being serviced, and they're easily identifiable where they are because all the pipes, all the conduit, all the mounting brackets, everything's intact inside. This is a picture of the showroom in 1935. And of course, cars were damaged, so we have a few pictures. This is from 1936. And this is a favorite of mine. Merry Christmas to Mother and the kids from Dad, 1936. I didn't have a dad that gave me a car, but would have been great. 1937, they added in a special lubrication bench, and that is, the space is still intact on the inside. When the Corps bought it, the first thing they did, let's see what I can, oh yeah, first thing they did was kind of renovated. And luckily, this is a copy of the plans for a freeze thaw room in 1948. And when we got the building, it was loaded with trash. Bombs had been in there. Nobody had taken care of it. And people brought in little skid loaders and smashed walls and moved things around to, to remove the valuable things that the Corps of Engineers had. One of the things we found in the trash were these blue line prints. Quite honestly, by accident, we pulled them out of the dumpster. People in architecture will know, we don't make blue line prints anymore. And one of the reasons is that they fade. After about a year of exposure to sunlight, they'll turn perfectly white. These things are still crisp blue, which means when the War Department built them in 1948, they'd been rolled up and kept in a drawer and kept in this building the entire time. We also have a picture of the laboratory that was built in 1949. That's on the third floor. That laboratory is still there. It's still intact. Everything's the same as when it was built. The Corps put, if we think, about $5 million into the top floor of the building. They converted it into a hazardous materials lab. All the plans, all the specifications, all the details for that particular piece are still there today. So not only do we have a building that's a gem on the outside, we have one that has enormous history on the inside. And we also have an emerging district. That's also an important part of this building, being a historic landmark. This is a site plan of the downtown area. Here's the Flatiron. Here's the courthouse. The items in blue are already historically designated as historic properties. The ones in red are properties that we haven't discovered yet and haven't put them on the local register. I can tell you, in the late 1970s, I helped write a book with landmarks, listing all the historic properties in Omaha. We got together at a book signing party after that book was published and said, we are so happy. We found every historic building there is in Omaha. We are a great success. Well, turns out, about 30 years, or 20 years later, we looked around and found a few more historic buildings. So a group of us got together, we wrote another book through landmarks, and I think that was 2005. And when we finished that book, we said, wow, well, finally, we did it. We didn't do a good job in the 70s, but this last book is magnificent. It has all the historic buildings, so now we're done. We can go have a beer and relax. But in fact, we've missed some buildings. This is one of the buildings that we missed. 420 South 18th Building, we didn't even include in the book. We also didn't include this Cadillac garage, or the MUD Building, or the Western Auto that was one of the stores, other stores' adventures into the automobile industry, or the Boyle's Business College. We didn't include the OPPD Transformer Facility. We've still missed this garage. We've missed the Redfield Building and the Dakota Title. So what we're seeing is that not only do we have a few spotted buildings, we have an entire neighborhood developing that can be one of the most magnificent historic districts in town. And this building is a part of that district. It's important to its integrity, and it's an important learning tool for us, for us to be taught, and also for us to teach our kids and future generations. So I urge you to vote for it, to consider it as one of our special landmarks in the city, and I'm open for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
501 Street. The presentation prior was extensive, so I won't say much. I do want to point out that I'm interested in the Army Corps Laboratory as a historical piece to this. Just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Larry Stewart, 5015 Lafayette, Omaha. I'm kind of an old guy, and I like old buildings. When I first bought my expensive camera, I took sequential pictures of the old buildings that were blown up in downtown Omaha, and I still don't like that. But here we have a very nice building, historical, equipped for a lot of things. Right close to the Flatiron. It's somewhat in an entertainment district, I guess. What a wonderful place to expand, maybe with an arts district. We have outside entertainment during the spring and summer, but there's not very many places, other than the City Codctorium, I mean, Performing Arts Center or Orpheum in the wintertime. This would be a great place for an arts district, an artist district, even auto clubs, shows during the wintertime. People might want to come and live there, stay there. They can even walk around in there with a drink in their hand. It doesn't have to be designated as an entertainment district, but you can have a one-stop shop. Artists might want to live there. We might even have musicians that want to live there that can promote Omaha music venues, and we don't have to go around the world looking for somebody to come in at our expense to promote Omaha music ventures. So let's think creatively and don't knock down another nice building. Who knows what could be in there? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Hello, Council. Mark Bondrasik, 211 South 37th Street. There's already been a big presentation about this. I just want to say that as we consider redevelopment strategies, as we take into account the necessity of taking action on climate change in the near future, the greenest way to develop is to repurpose buildings, not to tear them down and start over and build a whole new building with all new materials. The greenest thing to do is to take old buildings and refurbish them as is into new purposes. And this is a very well-built building. I think the evidence is there. It's a strong building. There's no big problems with it. Obviously, needs to be refurbished, and that will cost money. But this, we only have so many historic buildings like this. And as we consider how we're going to have to take drastic action to confront climate change as a government in the near future, you will be a part of that, and this is just a small, little piece of that discussion. And I just wanted to interject that here. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Good afternoon. I'm Norma Leclair, and I live in Bellevue. But I've been watching all of this discussion with saving buildings. And we moved here in 65 with the military, and I've watched a lot of wonderful buildings come down. And we spend a lot of tax dollars here, and I enjoy coming. I don't usually come and get excited about something new and square and uninteresting. But when it's a refurbishment or something being preserved with a purpose, I get excited. And I would like for you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 37, in ordinance to approve an interlocal agreement with the City of Bennington to adjust the extraterritorial jurisdiction lines and the associated master plan amendments generally located north of Military Road between 138th Street and 180th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 37 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 38, in ordinance to approve a street name change for 169th Street to change it to 170th Avenue from Crown Point Avenue Northwest to the north line of Lot 28, Pier 15 Edition.
Public hearing on agenda item number 38 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 39, in ordinance to continue the ongoing maintenance of portions of Abbott Drive by Lanahan Nurseries to maintain plantings along portions of Abbott Drive, and to specify the terms and conditions for such maintenance services between the city and Lanahan Nurseries through 2027.
Public hearing on agenda item number 39 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 40, in ordinance to accept the quote from Body Basics Inc. to enter into a three-year price agreement for the maintenance and repair of exercise equipment at Omaha Police Department Facilities.
Public hearing on agenda item number 40 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 41, in ordinance to men, Section 10-242 of the Omaha Municipal Code pertaining to travel expenses and reimbursement for use of personal vehicles.
Public hearing on agenda item number 41 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 42, in ordinance to approve the fiscal year 2018 state homeland security grant in the amount of $843,058 from the Nebraska Emergency Management Agency during the award period of September 1, 2018 through August 31, 2021.
Public hearing on agenda, I'm not, agenda item number 42 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any proponents?
Captain Bradwitt, Omaha Fire Department, Special Operations Coordinator. Here to answer any questions that be happening.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 43, in ordinance providing for approval of a 20-year lease agreement with Metro for the placement, installation, use, and maintenance of bus rapid transit stations on city-owned property.
Public hearing on agenda item number 43 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, Councilmembers. Kurt Simon, Executive Director, Metro Transit, 2222 Cummings Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'd answer any questions that you have.
Thank you.
I want to point out that these 25 station locations have been vetted by both Public Works and Planning at the preliminary stage, at a 60% design phase, at a 90% design phase. And tomorrow, there's a meeting set up to review them, once again, at the 100% level. We've taken the input, input from Planning and Public Works all through that process.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 44, in ordinance.
I'm sorry. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I think it's important just to highlight this item a little bit because I think adding the bus rapid transit system in Omaha is going to be a big step forward for our transit portfolio that we know needs lots of different options to be effective for our future and to track the workforce we need and to continue our growth. Kurt, if you wouldn't mind coming back up a little bit. This is just the lease stations for that, that new line that we're considering today. But there's 25 of them, and 11 of them are in my district, up and down Dodge Street, primarily from West Roads to downtown. So I don't know. I know you forwarded to me and I think everyone some photos of what those, where those placements are going to occur and what that kind of looks like.
I'd forward those to you, Councilman Festerson. But I didn't forward them to the other council members, but I do have some supplemental pictures here if you, if you want me to share those.
Yeah, let's do that for everyone's, everyone's information. And I think important to note, too, I've had some questions about, about them, you know, would they encroach upon sidewalks, or would there be additional lanes that need to be carved out? And I think the answer to those questions are no. The, the buses themselves will occur in traffic lanes and not otherwise curve into the sidewalk. It's just that the stations you're building with these leases will be constructed at those locations and provide a zero, zero-depth entry, you might say, into the bus, correct?
That's correct. They're primarily in city right-of-way. There are some slivers that we have to get some permanent easements on. There are raised platforms so that you can step right on and off the bus. The bus will be a 60-foot articulated compressed natural gas vehicle. It has three doors on the bus. It functions somewhat like a train does. There's off-board ticketing, so the bus pulls up to the platform, the doors open, you get on, you get off. There's a lot less dwell time, if you will, than a standard bus where people have to pay their fare or put a ticket in the fare box because those transactions are eliminated. So it speeds up the process quite effectively. In addition to that, there's technology that's utilized, transit signal priority, for example. At certain intersections, it'll allow the, the bus within certain parameters, the, the signal to see that and potentially hold that green signal so the bus can get through that intersection, thereby speeding up as well.
And generally speaking, where they occur near an intersection, and most of them do, it's to the traffic side, traffic flow side of the intersection, so we don't anticipate backups into the intersection. All those things obviously have been considered and...
They have. But most of the stations are far side of the intersections. It'd be much less time behind a bus, if you will, than there is with a standard transit bus that we experience today.
And then can you talk a little bit more about timing? So I know it's been a process of securing the federal money and some local match as well, and, and city cooperation and analysis of this. I think the latest timeframe is, should these leases be approved? Next week. Construction of these stations could occur in 2019, probably the summer?
There's an outside chance that we could, the construction will definitely occur, provided you approve these leases, starting in 2019, and, and probably spring of 2019, and continue on through 2019. We would still like to try and have it up and operational by late 2019, but more reasonably, it's probably going to be the first quarter of 2020.
When the buses are actually here and ridership will start riding and using, using the buses and their cars to access the...
Everyone will use it.
What is your estimated usage of the system?
The estimated first day is 3,500 passengers. And to put that in some perspective, that compares to about 1,700 on today's Route Number Two that runs Dodge Street. So, and that's based off of traffic modeling that was done between Metropolitan Area Planning Association.
Okay. So construction in 19, operational by, let's say, first quarter of 2020. Is that reasonable?
That's reasonable.
Okay. I think that'll be a great improvement, and I'm very supportive of that. My last question is, West Roads is kind of the western hub and will be sort of a park-and-ride situation for commuters. Much change is happening right there at the transit station, or how would you describe what'll happen there?
The actual bus rapid transit station will be just a little bit to the east of the current transit center that exists there, but it'll be fairly seamless. We do have an, an agreement with the West Roads, four park-and-ride slots, 100 to 150. And there's another developer in the area that we're trying to work with to get additional park-and-ride spots.
And when one parks there, is that free, or is there a...
Right now, it's free with the West Roads. And if we can cut a deal with this developer, it'll likely be free as well.
Great. I'll look forward to supporting this next week, and thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 44, in ordinance to approve and authorize the execution of an amendment to the Omaha Zoological Society Agreement to provide for the payment for the calendar years 2021 through 2030 to assist with the operation and maintenance of the Omaha Henry Dorley Zoo and Aquarium.
Public hearing on agenda item number 44 is today. Proponents, please.
My name is Dennis Pate. I'm the zoo director, 3701 South 10th Street, Omaha, and...
Jeremy Eadie, also with Omaha Zoological Society, 3701 South 10th Street.
Happy to answer any questions, anybody out here, or you all may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Ms. Melton.
Yes. And I know I have, I have a little zoo fact sheet, that I have all the information. But what I, what I would like is for the people that are watching and who are looking at, at what we're doing, this is a fairly large amount that we're, that the City of Omaha is, is committing to the zoo, and we've done so in the past. And the reason I'm supporting it is based upon some of the facts and what the zoo provides to the city itself. Would you, would you present some kind of the, the facts and figures of what the zoo, how the zoo contributes to our city and what the economic impact of the zoo is on our city?
Yeah, I think there are three parts to this. Jeremy will speak about the economic impact. This agreement goes back to 1966, when the Zoological Society formally took over the operation and maintenance of, of the zoo. Before then, it had been Riverview Park and existed that way for at least 50-plus years before that. And so the city had total responsibility for that, for restrooms, for programs, for maintenance, for roads, you name it. And so there was a cost associated with maintaining Riverview Park at the time that, again, in 1966, the Zoological Society took over. One of the things that we do that I'm very proud of, as is our board, is the degree to which we invite the entire community to use the zoo. And so as an example, last year, we gave away, through various programs, over 40,000 tickets, many of them to low-income families. The value of that is over $600,000. And so there has been a significant effort. Part of it's with United Way and giving away memberships to third graders who attend schools where 80% of the families are on free or reduced lunch. And so we, we work to make sure that those families that need it the most, that the tickets go to the right places. In the past, if you'll recall, we used to have free days, but they didn't really target those people, really, that needed... those people really that needed some help the most. And so we've gone ahead and done that. We formed a relationship with the library where we provide tickets to all of the branch libraries on a quarterly basis so that people who really want to come can use the libraries, and it brings value to the library card as well. And then a lot of social service agencies that request tickets, we help them out as well. So pretty extensive plan for doing that. And then Jeremy?
The society began engaging Dr. Eric Thompson at the University of Nebraska-Lincoln Bureau of Business Research in 2008 to conduct an annual economic impact study. And what we found was the 2017 impact was 228 million to the City of Omaha. That impact has grown two and a half times in the last 10 years, so we've seen substantial growth. Much of that growth has come from being able to attract visitors from both outside the city and outside of the state to, to Omaha. The average annual impact over the last three years has actually been 241.7 million.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 45, in ordinance to approve a restated memorandum of agreement with the Professional Firefighters Association of Omaha Local 385 concerning health care trust establishment for a period of January 1, 2019 to December 31, 2023.
Public hearing on agenda. Item number 45 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon.
Matt Carmichael, Deomo, Professional Firefighters, 6005 Grover Street.
I'm Mark McQueen. I'm an attorney with Baird Home Law Firm, 17th and Farnham. I act as a lead negotiator for the city's labor union negotiations, and Matt and I worked together on this particular agreement. Background-wise, to, to put this agreement into perspective, you have to go back to 2015. In that particular year, it's kind of a watershed moment in the city's negotiation with labor unions because the fire union requested that they assume sole responsibility for managing their health care plan. So in other words, they took over control for paying claims, administering those claims. The only obligation of the city, as a result of that 2015 agreement, was to pay premiums. At that particular time, a couple things were settled that are relevant to what we're going to talk about today. First and most importantly, the city's premium contributions were frozen in 2015 and remain today at exactly what they were in 2015. It's four consecutive years with the exact same premiums. Also in 2015, we agreed, the union and the city, that we needed to get back together and talk about premiums that would take effect in calendar year 2019, no later than April of 2018. The idea was get the health insurance part of our new contract negotiated, in particular the premium portion of the new contract, before the parties were engaged in broader collective bargaining for the entire contract. We've done that within the timeframes. We've reached agreement, and that agreement provides for a five-year extension, beginning in 2019 and continuing through calendar year end 2023, for the union-administered health care trust. That five-year extension, of course, includes changes to the city's premium contributions. Effective January 1, 2019, and for calendar year 2019, the city's premium contributions would increase by a factor of 10% compared to what we've been paying for the last four years. Pretty significant increase, except when you consider it in the context of following four years of premium freezes. That 10% increase in 2019 would then be followed in 2020 with an 8% increase. And then for the next three consecutive years, the premium increases would be somewhere no less than 3%, but no greater than 4%. The variation will be determined as a result of studies and publications from the Kaiser Family Foundation, who study and report on health care trends. What the union and the city would do in those final three years of this proposed five-year agreement is decide, should the increase be 3% or should it be something greater than 3%, but no greater than 4% in those last three years? So in, in total, what the city's looking at, if you look at this agreement started in 15 and, and continuing up to 2023, is premium increases over the course of those nine years that equate to a minimum of 27% or 3% per year and a maximum of 30% or 3.3% per year. Most employers, while struggling with health care costs, and they're obviously expensive, would be very pleased to secure an average of a 3.3% increase in health care cost over the course of almost a decade. And we felt good about that, both the union through its hard work in administering the plan and the city through financing that plan. One other important aspect should be mentioned. Back in 2015, the city was proposing an alternative city plan and wanted to go that direction, but was willing to cooperate with the union's request that they move to the union health care plan. Back then, we jointly decided on an escape plan, an emergency plan, in case, for whatever reason, the union's health care trust failed. We've done exactly the same thing through this agreement. In other words, if between 2019 and 2023, the union's health care trust fails, for, for whatever reason, or the union membership decides that they'd like to return to a city-administered plan, they have the right to do that. And if the union returns to a city-administered plan, we already know what those terms will be. Specifically, the fire union members would return to the exact same high-deductible health care plan that is currently in place for the entire Omaha Police Department. They would receive the exact same health care plan. They would pay the exact same health care premiums for that plan. So in that sense, it would be consistent, this contingency plan with the, with the city's long-term goal of one city, one plan for all, for all members. I think that pretty much summarizes our-
I'm just here to answer any questions if you have any on our part.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Palermo.
Mr. President, I just had one question. I, I didn't catch it along the way. I'm sure originally it had to be agreed upon from the bargaining unit, but did Local 385 agree to this recent agreement that we're talking about?
This very recent one, right now, we're in the process of that. There was a previously restated MOA that there were some basic scrivener errors that we had agreed to. We voted on that in August, and the body unanimously approved that. We discovered those errors. At this point, it's up for, it's been posted. We'll have informational meetings on the 10th and 11th of this month with the vote on the 18th and 19th.
Okay, give me a second to think about this. We're gonna vote to approve this next week, but the bargaining unit hasn't agreed on accepting it. Or am I, am I thinking that out wrong?
The, the, the union leadership, that way we have, it just has to go to the body now. That's the way our steps are. It has to be posted for so many days, has to be two informational meetings, then a separate, two meetings to vote upon those. So that way-
I understand that part, but what I'm asking is, you have a body here that has to agree upon it per the bargaining unit.
You're correct.
But they're gonna vote after we would vote on this.
You're right.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are no more lights. Next item.
Item 46, in ordinance to approve an amendment to the CDBG Program Deferred Payment Loan Agreement with the Livestock Exchange Building Limited Liability Company.
Public hearing on agenda. Item number 46 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Members of the council, David Levy, Baird Home Law Firm, 1700 Farnham Street. I promise this is the last time you'll have to hear from me today, here to answer any questions about this item.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public work, uh, public meeting is closed. Next, um, public hearing is closed. Next item. Oh, a light. Mr. Harding.
But I was gonna say, we're gonna have to reinstate the R.J. Brown role from Mr. Levy.
Good point, Mr. Harding. Next item.
Item 47, in ordinance approving redevelopment agreement with Nodle Development Company, LLC for the redevelopment of various properties within the builder's district at Nodle Redevelopment Plan Area, generally bounded by Cummings Street on the north, 14th Street on the east, Cass and Bird Streets generally on the south, and 22nd Street on the west.
Public hearing on agenda. Item number 47 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Members of the council, Kevin Anders, Kevin Anderson, City of Omaha Mayor's Office. We've been working very closely with the development team through this process, and this was presented in the form of the redevelopment plan a few weeks ago, so I'll, I'll keep my comments brief and instead make myself available for any questions. This is simply the next step in that process that formalizes the public-private partnership between the City of Omaha and the development team for this mixed-use development that, that's centered around and anchored by the new KeyWitt World Headquarters, a 190,000-plus square feet office tower adjacent to the existing KeyWitt University and will be adjoined by, by a sky tower. So really interesting to see what's going to happen in this part of, of north downtown. Really excited about, about that level of investment and continuing on the development progress we're seeing in north downtown and again into the core of the community. So we're appreciative of the KeyWitt Corporation's commitment to the City of Omaha and the core of the City of Omaha, and are really excited about the potential for follow-on development that, that's presented in this process. And, and what the redevelopment agreement does, again, formalizes that public-private partnership for the potential acquisition, supporting infrastructure investment, and again, the follow-on development that's presented as, as a component of this. So the development team is here. I do plan, believe they plan to present, so I'll stay close for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Mr. President, members of the council, department, city department heads and city staff, I'm Jay Nodle with Nodle Companies, 2285 South 67th Street in Exarban Village. Very pleased to be here today. We have all been working together on this project for quite a few months, as has Mayor Stauthert and her staff. So I'm going to keep my remarks very brief and just be available here to answer questions. But before I go, I want to say that this is yet another example of a great public-private partnership, and the city has certainly been very generous with their mental, physical, and financial resources as we've worked through this. We are looking forward to beginning our work after your vote next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Non-action items, items 48 through 74, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing under vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Motion adjourned. Second, roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerome.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 3:02.